Please call the roll.
Kyfer?
Here.
Zingy?
Here.
Flora?
Here.
Kuss?
Here.
Isom?
Here.
Gage?
Here.
Please join us in flagellants.
I flagellants to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First thing on the jet is public hearing on Resolution 162649, amending the 2016 general government operating and capital budget to provide supplemental appropriations for the fire department, $6,920; and the museum department, $235,750. Is there anybody here to address that tonight? Seeing done, we'll close out of the public hearing. That brings us down to communications. We've got a note here on homeless inebriate issue, and that's about it. That brings us down to persons to be heard. Elizabeth, come on, come up first. You have friends?
I've got a lot of friends. My name is Elizabeth Nelson, and I am here from First City Players. And the city of Ketchikan has been wonderful and supported First City Players for years. If you've been following anything we've been doing, you'll see that we just finished off a pretty successful production of The Little Mermaid where over 2,000 people came to see it, over six performances. We've got a bunch of wonderful things coming up. But as a way to thank the city and people who support First City Players, over the Christmas holidays, we do what we call the Figgy Pudding Singers. And we are here just to welcome you to the Christmas season.
(singing) We wish you a Merry Christmas. We wish you a Merry Christmas. We wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Good tidings we bring to you and your kin. We wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Oh, bring us a figgy pudding. Oh, bring us a figgy pudding. Oh, bring us a figgy pudding and a cup of good cheer. Good tidings we bring to you and your kin. We wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. We won't go until we get some. We won't go until we get some. We won't go until we get some, so bring some out here. Good tidings we bring to you and your kin. We wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you. And we hope that you have a very happy Christmas and a Happy New Year, and we hope to see you at Jazz and Cabaret in January. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Put some figgy pudding in the next room.
They still got the candy dish.
Yeah, we can't, but he's there.
That's right. Oh, yeah.
Agnes, come on up.
I'm gonna do you a great big favor of not singing. I'll spare you that. This is Jamie Palmer. I'm Agnes Moran. Late last summer, early fall, in response to citizen complaints about activities that were taking place on the docks and down on the benches, you folks directed Mr. Amalon to gather all the organizations and the people and groups in the community that were dealing with the homeless, hunger, and addiction issues. As a result of that first meeting, Evelyn Urbily, Sam McQuary, Katie Tepas, Jamie Palmer, and I committed to working on what we saw as a void in the services offered in the community. In particular, we were talking, we were thinking about the folks in the community that, for whatever reason, were not able to take advantage of the existing homeless shelters. So over the next few months, we met numerous times. We interviewed folks at the jail. We talked to the police chief. We talked to the fire chief. We even spoke with the VPSO out at Saxon. We worked with Gateway Community Health Services. And we talked with folks in the homeless community themselves. We also researched organizations both within the state and outside the state, and we spoke with them. These were organizations that were dealing with our focus population. We wanted to see what had worked. After we had done all that, we sat down and we put together a proposal and a budget for what we were calling a safe overnight shelter. On November 10th, 2016, remember that date? Once we had a pretty clear picture of what we wanted to do, Sam McQuary and I went and met with Captains Randy and Captain Cheryl Skelton at the Salvation Army. We wanted to fill them in, we were going there for twofold. One, we wanted to fill them in on the work we were doing today. And the second thing we were doing is we were looking for a home for the safe overnight shelter. Unfortunately, because the Salvation Army does not have an overhead fire protection system or a sprinkler system, it wasn't really a candidate for a safe overnight shelter. So we kind of went off, we regrouped, and a week later, we came back. And we wanted to touch base with the captains again and kind of bring them up to date on our current thinking. But between our visits, Captain Skelton took the initiative, and he reached out to his headquarters. And because he took that initiative, we have a new, we have a new program in town. It's called Gateway Cares. And Gateway Cares opened on Friday, November 18th, 2016. It's an emergency overnight warming center where people can be safe and warm off the streets at night. To date, 25 individuals have used the facility 123 times. So that's an impressive number. And there have been a high of 14 people registered for the evening and a low of four. Gateway Cares is unique in that it welcomes all people regardless of inebriation or chemically altered state, as long as they are not a danger to themselves or other folks in the facility. There's no alcohol consumption or drug use allowed in the facility, of course. Gateway Cares opens their doors at 10:30 at night, which is after PATH has closed their doors for the evening, for folks to come in out of the weather, and they close at 6:00 a.m. before the day shelter opens. Captain Skelton contacted the police department to let them know that Gateway Cares was open, and to date, the police have dropped off six individuals at the warming center. In the two weeks, or just over two weeks, that Gateway Cares has been open, and without any formal advertising other than a little open sign in the window you might see as you drive by, they've been averaging eight individuals staying there at night. Captain Randy Skelton is currently staffing the center by himself with occasional help from a volunteer. Even despite that situation, the Salvation Army has committed to running Gateway Cares through the end of March, of course depending on volunteer and staffing resources. Okay. And so after seeing the great work that Captain Skelton is doing, Katie, Sam, Jamie, and I shifted our focus from developing the safe overnight shelter to supporting the work going on at the Salvation Army. For Gateway Cares to move beyond being an emergency warming center to a sustainable October through March safe overnight shelter, they're going to need additional resources and community support. At a minimum, trained staff and possibly a fire suppression system will be keys to their long-term success. We are going to continue working with the Salvation Army to identify the resources necessary for them to have a sustainable program. At a later date, we would appreciate the opportunity to submit a fiscally prudent proposal derived from the data and the experience learned from Gateway Cares. Since the first public homeless inebriate mission issues meeting on September 21st, there have been significant positive steps taken in this community that will impact Ketchikan and the homeless community. With the opening of Gateway Cares, the possibility of the sobering center, and the yet-to-be-known outcomes of other committee discussions regarding homeless inebriate community, it's impossible for us at this time to gauge the current or long-term needs or the best way to support them, this community. Based on these recent developments, we think it's premature to tie the funds that you folks have allocated for homeless inebriate issues to a December 30 deadline. We support the actions of the city council to place the monies allocated for homeless inebriate issues in a reserves outside of the community grant structure so that these funds may be best utilized to address the evolving services for this population. And I'd be happy to take any questions.
Any questions, Agnes?
Just clarification on the number. You didn't say 80 per night, did you?
Eight.
Eight, okay, thank you.
And the difference between, probably, the difference between a warming center and a shelter is the ability to provide a place for them to sleep. If you provide beds and blankets, then you're limited to 10 individuals. And if you go over 10 individuals, you need a sprinkler system. And as the numbers here have shown, the need is greater than 10. They've had 14, they've had 13. And this is all without any advertising at all. This is just basically word of mouth within the community.
Any other questions?
If more than 10 were to show up in one night, would they not be allowed?
No, right now, because we are a warming center where they can come in, get out of the weather, but we don't provide beds. We do not provide beds. It's very similar, the model is very similar to what takes place at the day shelter. The folks come in, they have a warm place to sit, to stay, coffee's available. We don't provide beds. And it's, we're modeling that for the night. But I think to be truly successful, if you really do want to address the needs of this population, if you want to get them out of the camps and out of the docks and out of the different places, you really need to provide a place for them to sleep. This is, you know, Captain Skelton stepped up. You should thank him. Actually, you should thank his wife, because I don't think she's seen him in two weeks. So you really should thank Captain Cheryl. But they've really, you know, gone, gone beyond in this effort, so.
Agree.
So are they having people sign up to volunteer so he can go home?
You know, that's, it's, when you're dealing with this segment of the population, it's a fairly volatile population. And ultimately, you really do need to have trained staff and trained volunteers, you know? Especially around the first of the month when they get their checks. They tend to be a little more problematic, you know? Yeah, I believe Captain Skelton is reaching out to the faith community. But again, that's really not for safety, for all these other reasons. That's really not a long-term solution. That's why this is pretty much an emergency situation. He saw the need, he addressed it. And, you know, we are really grateful for that. But to move it to a sustainable program, and we were looking at October through March, because if you start in October, the weather's turning bad, you've exited the window where you have summer folks here, and so you're really dealing with our local population. And if you close at the end of March, you're closing before the summer hires show up, sometimes before the work shows up. And that was our focus. We really wanted to focus on our folks, our resident population. And that's the October through March. And that's the worst time for our weather, frankly.
Judy?
So the plan now is to come back with a budget. What you think it's going to cost, and that'll include training of staff and...
Yeah, the plan is, first of all, just to kind of monitor what we're doing here and kind of gauge the need, you know? It's been way more successful than we really expected initially, like I said, without any advertising at all. So it kind of is that stage right now. And then, yeah, the goal is, once we really know, and once we know what the structure's going to be, would be to come back at you folks with what we believe is, you know, a sustainable, believable program.
Any idea what that might be?
You know, it's hard to say. When we did the numbers for the safe overnight shelter, we did it on a completely, entirely different structure. We were utilizing, we were piggybacking off the day shelter structure, the First City Homeless Services, so we were able to utilize, you know, their insurance and a lot of the things there. Now that it's moved down into the Salvation Army, that's an entirely different structure, so you have to kind of start from scratch again. And in two days, I, I can't really duplicate in two days, but it took us three months to, you know, to come up with...
And there will be staff.
Yeah, there will be staff. There's got to be trained staff. I mean, you have to ask somebody, say, "Okay, that person's in trouble. We need to, you know, get them out of here and give them help." Or you need to have people that are trained in, you know, how to de-escalate, you know, situations, especially as the numbers increase.
Thank you very much for all the work you guys have done on this. We really appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Jordan, are you out there? Come on up.
Hello. My name is Jordan Barron. I am actually here on the base of Homeless Ideas Well. I have actually come to a standoff idea to where we could put up a new homeless shelter, possibly. And it's the old church right behind the Marine View on First Avenue, down from the street of R Y C. And I've, many years ago, I was, I was there with Jack Dubworth, and we just popped in just, because we were looking for runaways at the time. But now looking back on it now, I've actually looked at the structure in memory, being three floors and above level ground compared to the other homeless shelter in the PATH. I think if we were to assemble and redesign it, it would actually serve much better than having, than the purpose of what the PATH is, because many of the elderly and other things are disabled and stuff and can't really reach up the stairs all the time, and they have to travel downstairs and upstairs all the time. So there's like three basic floors, a downstairs, middle floor, and upstairs. So I'm just thinking like, I really do like your guys' ideas as well. And I think that if we are to assess the situation for the place, I think we could try to turn it into a better place for the homeless.
Thank you very much. You're out of here.
Second.
You. Any questions for Jordan? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kathleen?
She's got goodies. She always brings stuff.
I know. Okay, I'm one short of those, so I will bring one for the clerk tomorrow. My name is Kathleen Leid. I'm the director of the Arts Council. I want to give you a quick update on what we've been up to and what's coming up in the next couple of weeks. I told you about Felix Wong's solo photography exhibit called Moonshine in the Main Street Gallery. It's a, it was an exhibit of nightscapes. 572 people came through the gallery that last month, including 20 for his artist presentation where he gave away some of his secrets. So that was really fun. Our Saturday morning art celebration, I talked a lot about that the last time I was here. Our Saturday morning art classes are for young people's grade one through six. This time, we had Terry Burr and Ben Young and Linda Shrek working with the kids, and they were learning Haider and Shimshin culture, and Shimaliak, and Hadkell languages. And their celebration was unbelievable. They did a little performance of The Girl, who was taken by the Star People, and they were speaking Shimshin and Haider. They were dancing. They were able to wear some of the regalia, and they were also able to express the cultures. And these were for native and non-native kids, so everyone was learning the same stuff. It was really, really cool. About 50 family members came to watch it, and the kids were awesome. They were unbelievable. They soaked up these words and this little performance so well. It was, it was really fabulous. We partnered with KIC to be able to do this, and everyone agrees that we will do this again in some other formats and other ways very soon. It was a really successful partnership. We also had our second Arts on Court class with Kathy Peavy. She did fused glass. It was full. In fact, we had too many people, and so that was another huge success. Our Arts on Court classes are an awesome way for us to help give work to artists in the community, but also as an outlet, you know, a safe, happy, fun outlet for adults in the community. Out of the Arts on Court classes, they've started a thing called the Ceramic Society. So this is Leif Severson, working with the people in the community. There's about 20 people that want to continue to work on ceramics. So he started a club, and that'll be going on at the Main Street Gallery. You might have noticed the Winter Arts Fair happened last weekend. It's a three-day event. We had a blast. About 80 artists participate in the three-day event. That includes about four or five food vendors. The Winter Arts Fair is different than the Blueberry Arts Festival in that everything has to be designed or handmade by an artist. And that's not the case at Blueberry. Blueberry is, is for everyone, but for the Winter Arts Fair, it's fine art. So we want somebody's hands in everything that happens there. And so we had about 2,600 people come through. The buses that were traveling through, there was a little bit of a bus disaster, but it was quickly solved, and it was a good, good thing to have the buses running. So thank you so much for approving that and making that happen. That was a great thing. One of our fiscal agents, we fiscally sponsor five groups. One of them is the San Fitcher Memorial Scholarship Fund. That concert happened last night. That concert raises funds to give scholarships to students around the community to attend summer music camps. And they've given away about 60 scholarships over the years. This group is, we are their fiscal sponsor, but they have their own board, they have their own selection committee, they go through the applications that arrive and choose people to receive these scholarships. It's a pretty extraordinary group of people. And so that concert happened last night. It was well-attended, and they've already put the funds in the bank and are waiting to receive those applications due on January 1st. The Winter Art Walk is tomorrow. We have about 20 downtown businesses participating. Most are featuring new work by local artists. And we estimate, for this, it's hard to count, we estimate about 800 people come out for it. So that's great. The attending businesses keep their doors open five to eight, and then, of course, there's lots of businesses that just stay open and aren't on the poster and get to take advantage of what's happening downtown as well. In the Main Street Gallery, our exhibit is Youth in Art. And this year, we've gotten pieces from all the schools in the district. That includes Montessori schools, homeschools, Revilla High School, everybody, K High, the Native Arts Studies, everything. And we've gotten work from Annette Island, and we've gotten work from Craig. So by the, when I left to come over here, we had 100 kids, artists on the wall, and it's only maybe a half up. So we're going to have a ton of kids' artwork up there, and I hope that you can all make it. The opening is five to eight, and that exhibit is going to run until the eighth, until the ninth of this month. I don't want you to think that the Arts Council is the only one doing stuff. I was astounded when I looked at the calendar. I wanted to give you just a little bit of a sense of what else is happening. During the Art Walk, several businesses will have local musicians playing, including the New York, the, at the Creek Street Cabaret, the, what they're calling the First Annual Chet Baker Concert, which will be music that is Chet Baker's music, or they're playing in his style. It should be really interesting. You just noticed First City Players, they're working on their Figgy Pudding Singers, but they're also having auditions for their next performance. So those guys are working hard. The Ketchikan Theater Ballet, their Nutcracker performances are the ninth and 10th. Square Dance is on the ninth. Boom Ball happens every Sunday and Wednesday. Our Stories at Latitude 56 is December 11th. And another, the Ketchikan Community Concert Band is Saturday. The Ketchikan Community Choir is Saturday and Sunday. The Clover Past Christmas, they're going to do Christmas songs. That's on the ninth, 10th, and 11th. And then the Monthly Grind is on the 17th. And we've only gotten to the 17th in all of those. So the arts are alive and well in Ketchikan, and thank you so much to, to you guys for your support of, of that in Ketchikan.
Thank you very much.
You bet. Any questions?
No.
All right, thanks.
All right, that's the last person signed up. Is there anybody else here that would like to address the council that did not sign up? Seeing done, we'll move on. Thank you very much.
Come on over.
Oh, come on up.
Hi, my name is Hamilton Gelhar, and I own 13 Creek Street. And I've been really following what's going on with the marijuana review tonight, but I just want to voice my support as a business owner. I own a large business on Creek Street, and I know the Stony Moose is, the perimeter's across the creek from me, and I really approve it. It's a year-round business. And so I hope you guys make a good business decision for the area. And it's really a decision of whether the war on drugs didn't really work, and we already know this. So if, if it's disapproved, it's just a continuation of the same thing. And people, if they want to smoke marijuana or buy it, they're going to buy it. So why not make it legal, safe, and you guys can make money off from it? So thank you.
Thank you very much, Hamilton. Anybody else want to address the council? All right, let's move on into consent agenda. The only thing I wanted to add, unless you guys, it was 783, ordinance 161831, amending the National Electric Code adoption, first reading. Nobody has any problem with that, we'll do that. All right, do we have a motion to consent?
Yeah, I'll move in second.
Madam Clerk, who can read the items, please?
I approve of minutes regular city council meeting of November 21st, 2016. Resolution number 162649, amending the 2016 general government operating and capital budget to provide supplemental appropriations for the fire department of $6,920 and the museum department of $235,750. Award of contract number 16-40, 2017 to 2021, heating fuel supply with Petro Marine Services. And one that was added. Ordinance number 161831, amending subsections A and B of the Ketchikan Municipal Code, section 19.12.010, entitled the National Electric Code adopted in first reading.
Thank you. Any questions on any of the items? Seeing done, call her on.
Kyfer?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Kuss?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Severson?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Okay, that passes seven to nothing. Brings us down to 784, retail marijuana store license application, the Stony Moose. We have two mo, either one, an alternate motion, one or two.
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I move the city council approve the retail marijuana store license application for the Stony Moose E and M Holdings LLC, 127 Stedman Street, Ketchikan, Alaska, 99901.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Julie, want anything?
I just want to say how thorough it was. I can't believe everything they had to put in there. And not, it's, it's actually the next one that has even right down to the badge that the worker has to wear. But I noticed even on the Stony Moose's application, they mention that the securities that a person has to go through just to get into the store, and everything that's purchased. Nobody holds on to merchandise before it's paid for, before they've shown their ID. Again, it's all, it all happens behind the counter. They're showing the merchandise, and the employees carry it with them behind the counter, take it to the cashier. You don't actually hold it until you pay for it, and then you take it out the door. It, it was...
Your Honor, I move the city council authorize the budget transfer in the amount of eighteen thousand five hundred from the port department, two sixteen. Temporary wage account, account number five, zero, two, dash, zero, one, to the overtime account, number five, zero, one, dash, zero, one, for the purpose of funding unanticipated overtime costs through the end of two sixteen.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Anybody wanna address? Go ahead.
One comment, just that I appreciate the crossing guards. I just wanna say that again. I know I've said it before, but I, I saw that a lot of the overtime had to do with some of the crossing guards going back to college and the cruise ships were still coming in, so they had to have some overtime there. And I, I appreciate every single one of them. I'm glad they're down there.
Anybody else? Call the roll.
Kuz?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yep.
Kiper?
Yes.
Seivertson?
Yeah.
Gage?
Yep.
Isom?
Yes.
Okay, that passes seven to nothing. Brings us down to seven, eight, four, retail marijuana store license application, Stony Moose. Uh, we have two mo- either one, alternate motion, one or two.
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I move the city council approve the retail marijuana store license application for the Stony Moose E and M Holdings LLC, one twenty-seven Stedman Street, Ketchikan, Alaska, nine 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 zero one.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Julie, want anything?
I just wanna say how thorough it was. I can't believe everything that they had to put in there and, uh, not, it's, it's actually the next one that has even right down to the badge that the worker has to wear. But I noticed even on the Stony Moose's application, they mentioned that the securities that a person has to go through just to get into the store and everything that's purchased. Nobody holds on to merchandise, um, before it's paid for, before they've shown their I D. Again, it's all, it all happens behind the counter. They're showing the merchandise and the employees carry it with them behind the counter, take it to the cashier. You don't actually hold it until you pay for it and then you take it out the door. It, it was all in the explanation and it's, it's, that's a long application and I read through both of them and I just wanna say how thorough it was and, and I am, uh, I'm supportive of this.
Anybody else?
I have a question about, also.
Kathleen, Dick.
About how the, um, did we find out what, how the testing facilities were gonna be working or?
Carl, do we have a testing facility down here yet?
Not aware of this.
Can you send it up there?
Is that how they're, okay.
Can you come up there?
Yeah.
So, how they getting around that? Cause I know the law said, you know, you had to have it in your community, how you, how's it?
Yeah, AMCO now is telling us, uh, the coal memo, just follow the coal memo. And so, when you transport, um, it has to be, um, from facility to facility, you have to have a manifest, you have to have a lockable container. We had to explain that actually in the application.
Yeah, it was explained.
And that was something that they even said, you need to go further, so. And, uh, they said, yes, the, the coal memo supersedes all federal regulations.
Thank you.
So, basically what happens is if, if you have it in transport, the seal's broken, um, the federal government will supersede the state and most likely, I'm assuming, the state would pull your license.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right, Dick.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not gonna support either one of these and I'll give you my reasons why. When we first started out in this, I don't know, maybe in the spring or as winter, I think for the most part, we were sitting here thinking, we're not gonna have one of these retail stores in the downtown area. And quite frankly, I'll blame the borough planning department for misleading us and these guys here were very good. They found two cracks. And I think probably we, I'm with you, we were missing our duties and making sure those cracks didn't get filled up before we just got as far as it did. And I still think we have the opportunity to deny a store within the downtown area. And all we've gotta do is protest this and then take it to the borough and get it fixed because we know that there's cities down south that are do- are not allowing retail stores in the downtown corridor. And we've had some pretty clear communications from the cruise line people that they would prefer that these were not readily available. And so, I'm, I'm not gonna say anything else. If we pass this tonight, then I sincerely hope that maybe this council can agree upon, I know we've limited it to two, but I think in the future, we ought to block it off so that if either one of these two go away, somebody doesn't replace them. And we may have to do it through borough planning, but that's my comment. I'm not gonna support it.
Thank you, Dick.
Okay, one other question regarding, um, the ventilation and, um, how the, um, in the room that you would be smoking, how, um, that ventilation goes to the outside and if there's apartments above, how does that not permeate, um, people's living quarters?
Sure, that's a good question. There's no apartments above there, above that facility and we have to keep everything within the premise we can exhaust out. And so, we've had to research very expensive smoke heaters, uh, that, um, the industry standard ones.
So, how would that protect your employees?
Um, it's got a, a coal filtration system. I don't know a ton about it, but they're big. They're, they're about the size of both of those facilities.
Are they better than the ones they used to put in the bars?
Yeah, they're extremely expensive, so, but, uh, yeah. So, that's, and we, and we'll have it in multiple locations in the facility.
Thanks again.
Yeah, I guess I'll stay.
Yes, yes.
Just one more comment about the cruise line industries. Um, and correct me if I'm wrong, if any of the council members, but I don't think we've seen any correspondence opposing from the cruise line industries. And I know I haven't heard anyone at a council meeting from the cruise line industries opposing. Is that correct?
Officially.
Dick?
We know, they have been in town and they have talked to several of us, so maybe they didn't jump up and down on the public, but they've been working to make certain things happen. And so, if you need a letter from them, I can get a letter from them.
Anybody else? Bob?
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that our, um, wastewater division, public works in city, uh, sign off on their disposal plan to run down a garbage disposal. I don't know what the volumes are, I don't think they're gonna be very much, but, um, I think if, I don't know if there's a permit available because if, if somebody's gonna do this in an area where they have cultivation, it could be a lot. And I don't think we wanna be in that boat, so. But I don't think retail is gonna have much of anything.
Anything else? Call the roll.
Zingy?
Yes.
Kiper?
Yes.
Seivertson?
Yeah.
Gage?
No.
Isom?
Yes.
Kuz?
No.
Flora?
Yes.
Okay, that passes five to two. Uh, brings down to seven, eight, five, retail marijuana store license application, Rainforest Cannabis. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I move the city council approve the retail marijuana store license application for Rainforest Cannabis, J C Colanco, two, seven, two, six, Water Street, Ketchikan, Alaska, nine 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 zero one.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved in seconded. Julie, anything to add?
No, basically, just for the same reasons. This is the one that actually had a sample of the, of the employee tag they would be wearing. Yeah, nothing else.
Anybody else? Call the roll.
Kiper?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Kuz?
No.
Isom?
Yes.
Gage?
No.
Seivertson?
Yes.
Okay, that passes five to two. Hey, that brings us down to seven, B, one, electric division demand side management practices.
Your Honor.
Go ahead, Bob.
I move the city council to direct the general manager and electric division manager to take such measures to implement demand side management practices within the electric division in anticipation of future, uh, load growth with greater Ketchikan community and determined appropriate by the city council.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved in seconded. Bob?
Yeah, I'd like to thank the utility and Andy for all the work they put into this and the definitions and, uh, you know, clarification of how, how some of this might work. I just wanna make sure that the city is prepared and well-placed if there happens to be an industry or something that would come in that would dramatically change our load growth, uh, rather than try to address it at a time when we're scrambling to, to meet that load. I think there's some standard practices out there and Andy has spelled them out real well in here. And I just think that it prepares us for that inevitable future. I know that there's been a, um, and I think Andy relayed to me earlier that there was a study out, uh, presently that talks about load growth and, and there might even be a population decrease. I'm more of an optimist and I think that will be, we'll move through this.
Anybody else? Questions on it? Call the roll.
Seivertson?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Kiper?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to nothing. That brings us down to approval of vouchers. Daily News, four thousand three hundred and twenty-six dollars and fifty-two cents. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor, I move for approval of vouchers. Ketchikan Daily News in the amount of four thousand three hundred and twenty-six dollars and fifty-two cents.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Call the roll.
Okay, Kiper?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Gage?
Yeah.
Seivertson?
Yes.
Okay, that passes seven to nothing. That brings us down to managers report. Carl?
Just one, Mr. Mayor. You'll be getting a packet tomorrow for the special meeting next week on the state's, uh, Tunnel to Tatsus project and we also will be getting a number of budget updates to the clerk tomorrow for distribution to the councils, uh, and that's all about.
And the packet will be addressing some concerns from what you guys reviewed?
On the Tunnel to Tatsus project, we tried to flag up the concerns that we think weren't attention by the council.
Okay, and we're having a meeting on noon on Tuesday.
Correct.
All right, um, anybody have any questions on the manager's report?
Yeah, Your Honor.
You bet.
Just one, and I, I mentioned this to Carl a while ago, is, uh, under the public works report, the, uh, design and contract for the, I don't know, what, what you call it, pedestrian improvement access downtown, that contract is probably open today and at one time, we had some discussions about the, uh, how big the bulbs and things were gonna stick out there and around and I just wanna make sure that we see that design before we award a contract. Because I know a couple of them I saw draw on the ground were totally unacceptable, so...
Yes, uh, public works director, Mark Hilson. We did take our cues in that design from the council's comments to the D O T for their Tunnel to Tatsus project. So, we were able to minimize, uh, any bulb outs that we proposed and we actually eliminated, uh, bulb outs from one of the intersections. So, we did not take a cookie cutter approach. We designed this purely to meet the requirements to get, uh, handicap access through the intersection. So, any bulb outs were minimized. We're gonna prepare a, uh, exhibit plan, uh, that will have, uh, accompanying the recommendation for award that shows you exactly where these, these bulb outs are. So, the ones that were marked in the ground, uh, were our first cut and now we've minimized them from there.
Okay, thank you. So, the mayor will be able to park in front of this store.
Yeah, they did, yes, talked him about that where you're going. Yes, thank you, Dick.
Tell me, that's a good place for, for you guys.
City clerk's file.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Go ahead.
We haven't, uh, managed report yet?
You bet.
One of the things I was looking at is the overtime report on the water division and it wasn't so much the overtime itself, it's through the explanation, they talk about some line breaks. And, you know, the lines on Tongas Avenue and the lower avenues were put in a number of years ago and I don't think they were designed for a hundred and fifteen pounds per square inch. I think we used to have low petrohydrons with probably somewhat less than that. And so, do we take into consideration when we put in the new, like a three million gallon tank over here in, uh, Bear Valley and then the one up on Jefferson and another one up on, uh, Jackson Street, that the added pressure may cause us to have, uh, problems with our older cast iron, is there a way that?
Mr. Mayor?
I don't know what that, I don't know what that cast iron is designed for, John.
Well, the cast iron's actually rated for a, uh, hundred and fifty pounds, uh, surface and, uh, all the flanges are there. Real problem with cast iron is it's very fragile.